It should be live.
All right, welcome everyone. Notice is hereby given that due to the novel coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic and recent executive orders issued by the governor of the town of Islip zoning Board of Appeals hearing scheduled for Tuesday, July 21st, 2020 at 6:00 PM will be held electronically via Zoom webinar instead of an in-person public hearing and will be streamed live over the internet. Instructions on how to access the Zoom webinar and our live stream available on the town's website. All right. John M. Lourenzo Chairman's zoning Board of Appeals. Yes, Ms. Passaro?
Um, I don't see Jean D. Nicola here yet on the first application and.
So we'll second call him.
Yeah, let's, let's, I don't see them in and I did speak with his office just a little while ago and I think they're a little bit taken off guard for whatever reason. So let's just call the next one and I'll keep looking for them to arrive.
So tonight's first application number 408-20 Reginald and Stephanie Fowler. Permission to use dwelling for two-family family use only pursuant to ISO town code section 68, 419.1. Residents double eight district south side of Beaver Dam Road, 440 feet east of Wilson Boulevard, Islip, New York. Is anyone here for the applicant?
Give me a second. Yep, I've got them. Ms. Fowler, you with us? Hold on. She was, she was, she was in twice. So let's see if this one works. Okay.
I'm sorry, I am in. Twice, she was, she was in twice.
Okay, so if you're watching on YouTube, you have to turn that off because there's a little delay.
She was in twice. If you're watching on YouTube.
Yeah, if you're watching, it's a little delay. You have to turn that off because it's a little delay. Oh, maybe, are you together in the same room, Mr. and Mrs. Fowler? Okay.
All right, so we seem to have eliminated that problem. All right, please name an address for the record.
Together in the same room. Are you together in the same room? Okay. Mr. and Mrs. Fowler? Okay.
All right, so we seem to have eliminated that problem. All right, please name an address for the record. Please name an address for the record.
We're, we're hearing a lot of accessories.
Are you, are you two on a computer next to each other or are you watching it on YouTube?
No, uh, Zoom.
Okay, you're not next to each other with two laptops, correct?
No, we're in two, um, place.
Excuse me?
Are you watching on YouTube? Uh, Zoom, no, uh, Zoom.
Are you not next to each other with two laptops, correct?
Our IT department is saying that one of you has to move mute.
All right, that seems to have solved it, I think.
Good evening. Can you, can you hear me?
He's on mute, Chairman.
They're both muted now.
Oh, yeah, I would mute.
Whoever's going to speak has to be off mute and the other person has to be on mute. So one can come off mute. We'd appreciate it.
Okay, did, is he still on?
Okay, great, we can hear him. You Mr. Fowler, correct?
Okay, good, he's still on. Okay, good, he's still on.
Okay, can you hear me?
All right, I, the problem is with Mrs. Fowler.
How do I take it off of Lodge 2 because I'm on Zoom?
I don't know.
Hey, can one of you just disconnect from the Zoom and the other one just stay on the Zoom with the separate?
I'm a mute, you stay on.
Just disconnect from Zoom, and the other one just disconnect from Zoom, and the other one just stay on the Zoom.
Yeah, Mr. Fowler, I think the problem is with Mrs. Fowler. So have her mute and you can stay on.
There you go. Can you hear me, Ms. Fowler?
Mr. Fowler, unmute yourself, please.
Yes, I hear you.
Okay, all right, there we go.
So how are you tonight, sir?
I'm, I'm doing good.
Go ahead, name an address for the record, please.
210 Beaver Dam Road, Islip, New York, 11751.
And your name, sir?
Reginald Fowler.
You're here seeking permission to use dwelling for two-family family use only?
Uh, yes, well, you know, I would really rather for my wife to speak because she's, we quit speaking about that.
I don't, I don't know if that's really that important right now. We, I'm looking through the file and it, I believe that, um, it's established and based on medical. Um, your daughter lives with you, correct?
Yes, Mrs. Fowler, yes.
And everything's in order, Mary, according to the file?
Everything's in order.
Great. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Wechsler, I'll take a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion that we grant the application for a period of three years.
Second.
Call in favor? Ms. Fowler, application granted. We'll see you in three years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next application, number 409-20 Diana Kiano and Luz Agudelo, excuse me. Permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to ISO town code section 68-602. Leaving a driveway having a width of 31 feet instead of the permitted 18 feet. Residence B District, south side of Whipple Street, number 376. 175 feet east of Jefferson Avenue, Brentwood, New York. Is anyone here for the applicant?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
And how are you?
Hello, good afternoon. Roxanne Trella, Dynamic Expediting, the 1040 Terry Road, Ronkonkoma.
Great, how are you tonight?
Good, enjoying the air condition. I'm looking to establish an accessory apartment. It is 302 square feet. The home is owner occupied and we're here for the driveway as well. The driveway, um, it was noticed as having 31 feet instead of the permitted 18. Mostly because the denial from zoning said that the width of driveway determined by the engineering department was different than the survey. So I actually drove by the property today and engineering did an inspection of the wrong house. They went to 380 Whipple instead of 376. So the survey is correct and the width is 20 instead of 18. So we still need a variance. It's just much less than what was advertised.
So you'd like to amend the call in the meeting to remove 31 feet, their permitted 18 and replace it with 20 feet instead of 18?
Yes.
Make a motion to amend the call to meeting, leaving driveway having a width of 20 feet instead of permitted 18.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
I were amended and so everything that, that, that actually falls in within what we normally see with the width of driveways, correct? Anything else is in order? You said 360 something square feet?
302 and it's owner occupied. So everything else is in order.
Right. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Listen, Nicole, I'll take a motion.
A motion to grant the application for a period of three years.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
If you're granted.
Thank you.
Next application, number 410-20 Jose Mejia Gonzalez and Juana Roxana Ventura Vega. Permission to leave shed 10 feet by eight feet, having side yard of one foot instead of the required two feet. To leave patio on side property line instead of the required four feet. Residence B District, north side of East Chestnut Street, number 49, 175 feet east of Boulevard Avenue, Central Islip, New York. Is anyone here for the applicant?
Let's see again.
All right.
Roxanne Trella, Dynamic Expediting with offices at 1040 Terry Road, Ronkonkoma, New York.
How are you tonight, again?
So the shed is about 80 feet. It's just the corner of the shed that has one instead of two. All the other sides comply. And it's the pavers around the shed that you can see highlighted on the survey.
Great, well, seems de minimis. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Miss Nicole, I'll take a motion.
A motion to grant the application.
Second.
Aye.
Have a great night.
Thank you, have a good night.
Next application.
Hold on, fellas. The first applicant has arrived. We have Jean D. Nicola present.
Well, he's got to wait till the end now, but.
Oh, you wouldn't never do that.
You're right, I never would. All right, calling application number 407-20 Bayport Meadows Estates. Permission to renew special permit for model home in residency district pursuant to section 68-415J. Residency District, east side of Church Street, through lots of Sunrise Highway, Bayport, New York. Is anyone here for the applicant? Mr. D. Nicola, you need to unmute your microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Messina, and I do apologize for, uh.
Oh, don't be silly. I was only teasing you, please.
Thank you. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Eugene Aldina Cola, 200 Railroad Avenue, Sable, New York. The applicant is seeking to renew a model home use pursuant to 68, 451J. The applicant is the developer of a senior citizens, single-family subdivision consisting of 148 units on 23.48 acres. The applicant has 20 units remaining unsold and continue to use the model home to exhibit to prospective purchasers. This, this model home application has been granted in the past. Model home is the same unit. It has been previously approved by this board. It is unit within the development and when all homes are sold, this model home will be sold to a purchaser. A model home is being actively used for display to, to prospective purchasers. I, the model home complies with all conditions for parking, drainage, and is consistent with the subdivision land development regulations. I respectfully request that the, uh, that the model home permit be renewed by this board. Thank you very much, Mr. Messina and members of the board.
Thank you, Miss D. Nicola. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any question? Mr. Sullivan, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the application.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Application granted, sir. Have a great night.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much and again, my apologies.
Oh, no. No reason to apologize. Next application, number 412-20 William and Mary Stroh. Permission to leave cellar entrance, having a front yard through lot.
We didn't do 411.
I don't have a 411.
Okay, we were worried about that, Natasha. We weren't sure who had that older agenda. 411 has withdrawn their application.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so once again, application 412-20 William and Mary Stroh. Permission to leave cellar entrance, having a front yard through lot of 18 feet instead of the required 40 feet. Residence A District, west side of Parkwood Road, number 76, 105.19 feet south of George Street, through lot to Lake Drive South, West Islip, New York. Is anyone here for the applicant?
They are, I've just promoted them.
Promoted?
From attendee to panelist. You're promoted also.
To what?
Mr. and Mrs. Stroh, oh, there we go. We have the Strohs. Okay, and we have the architect.
How are you tonight?
Good, Ronald Quaple Architect, 24 Neary Avenue, Babylon, 1702. We built, when we originally filed for the variance, I had designed the rear cellar entrance, you know. Just gave it dimension. I thought that was a good enough slope. During construction documents, the owner requested a certain slope, so I made the longer. Not, you know, thinking about the variance that we had received for their front yard for that thing originally. Just an error by my part and I apologize and everything's done on the house. We just have to go through this again.
So what were you granted originally for the front yard?
I don't remember. Now we went with 16 feet off the house.
So the, I, if I can interrupt, um, to install the entry leading front yard through lot of 26, the required 34.
Okay, so it's an eight-foot difference.
Yeah, this is, if you guys can see the picture here, that's, that's the cellar entrance that they're talking about.
If I, if I can ask, Mr. Chairman, so there was a prior application. We know there's a 40-foot setback required. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and we granted what?
We grant, we gave him 26 instead of 34 for a through lot.
So we gave you 26 instead of 34 and then you built the cellar entrance that goes out another eight feet?
Correct, yes.
I, I don't understand.
What happened was the, the.
Wait, wait. How? You knew what the dimensions were that were granted, correct?
I totally forgot about those dimensions. I knew that.
But that does, wait, you don't totally forget about it. You're an architect. What do you mean you've totally forgot?
Well, I was, I, I, I stayed within the setbacks of the house and that was concerning. I kept thinking this is the rear of the house, like a rear yard. And I was like, you know, this really doesn't pertain because we had wetlands on the other side of the road. The road is very narrow. It's really not even, you know, a rebel road. Um, there's no houses ever going to be built on this side because we got the stream on, except 231. Um, so it totally like slipped my mind. I just.
I have, I have a concern because I understand it's totally slipped your mind, but we gave you a specific. We have a 30, actually a 40-foot requirement. We gave you the 26. That seemed to be quite a relaxation. And I doubt we would have given you from 26 down to, what would that be, 18?
Right, but Mr. Wechsler, in fairness, and you know, and here's where we're kind of hampered tonight because we don't have anyone from planning to ask with respect to prior precedence of variances granted in the area.
Well, why don't we do this? My suggestion is let's reserve and let's see what we have, what the nature and character neighborhood is. I'm always a little off put when we grant a variance and then somebody comes in and says, I, I, I don't know, it just slipped my mind by eight feet.
No, I, I've been doing this for 35 years. I made a mistake. I've never made a mistake like this in my life.
Well, whatever it is, it's there.
Hey, listen, Mr. Wechsler and I are lawyers. We make mistakes too sometimes.
We make mistakes. But that doesn't mean that we ask a board or a court to overlook it.
I didn't realize until we did the survey and the final survey.
But it's there. We have, yeah. Mr. Architect, we have to deal with what's there.
I understand.
And we need some more data. Mr. Wechsler's correct. We need some more data, so.
I do agree with you, but I would like, you know, if you look at the aerial, it is that, that through lot is backed up to a road which is backed up to, I guess, DEC land, which then turns into wetlands and Tier Park Avenue, so.
So this isn't the real front yard. This is the, because it's a through lot, this is.
Correct.
Okay, so in other words, if that, if that lot were, if that piece of pavement weren't there, Mr. Chairman, you're saying that the, the setback wouldn't be that great and of course, this would not, probably not have a problem.
To throw a lot up into land that can never be developed, which then backs up to 231, so.
So your argument is it's not really a through lot at all, right?
That's, that's what I'm trying to say is I don't feel it's a through lot, but you know, according to town regulations, it's considered a through lot.
Right.
Where, where does that road go behind the house?
It just goes back and it circles back up to Parkwood Avenue.
So, so to follow up on what the, the vice chairman said was if that piece of pavement wasn't there, it wouldn't be a through lot exactly. There wouldn't be a road behind it, but there is an open road behind it between, between the buffer and the property.
Right, but the other land be, on the other side of the road will never be developed because it's all wetlands.
I mean, it, it looks like it terminates at one of the houses, right? To the, I'm thinking it's the south.
I think that's just tree cover making it look like that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it terminates, well, makes, it makes, you make a right and you go back up to, it goes up.
It's a loop. It's a circle.
I see, okay.
Do we have an overhead? Do we have an aerial?
Yeah, it's right.
It's on the screen.
On the screen.
I don't see it.
Go to your, keep swiping left.
I'm sorry, I don't see it. All right, you know.
Let's provide that though to Mr. Wechsler and then that way, because if we're going to ask for planning information from planning, there's no reason we can't have it. By, yeah, by the time we make a decision. And it's existing anyway, so it's not like, you know, we're holding anyone up from the construction season.
That was the only thing holding up the seat of honor. I was like, I can't believe I made that mistake.
Okay, you know, like I said before, we all make mistakes. We're all human.
Speak for yourself, Vinnie.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application?
I don't know about the human part, Mr. Wechsler.
That's the table.
Any further questions?
No, thank you.
Mr. Wechsler, I'll take a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion that we reserve the station.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Just a couple of, we'll, um, we have 62 days by law, as you know, but we'll do the best to get it out to you as soon as we possibly can.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Again, I apologize for this. I really didn't.
No worries.
Thank you. Take care.
All right, next application, number 413-20. Allied Scrap LLC. Permission to leave accessory building approximately 60 feet by 100 feet, having a side yard of 5.3 feet instead of the required 10 feet. And to leave accessory building, Baylor Hut, having a side yard of three feet instead of the required 10 feet. Industrial One District, west side of Lincoln Avenue, number 1120. 537.49 feet south of McCormick Drive, Holbrook, New York. Is anyone here for the applicant?
Yes, good afternoon, Chris Robinson from Robinson and Muller Engineers here on behalf of Allied Scrap.
Good evening, sir.
Very good. Sorry, there's the video. We're here before tonight, we have a 4.77 acre metal scrapyard I-2. It's subject of a town board approval in May of 2013 to operate the scrapyard. And it was in front of this board in July of 2013 as well for a side yard setback to maintain an existing retaining wall at four feet off the property line. And for a accessory structure height of 25 in lieu of 18. Uh, that was, um, BZA 376-13 from July of 2013. Today, we're here for two structures that are located on the north side of the property line. It's shown on the plan that you have in front of you. To the middle right, it says new NY State DEC Electronic Recycling Storage. And to the left of that is a baler, a metal baler. Uh, the storage building is a Quanzet hut style storage facility. It's the arched building roof. Um, I did submit some photographs this morning, but I'm not sure if they, they made it into the files. Uh, I do have them if, if you want me to share them on the screen. So it's a arched style Quanzet hut building, so it starts off level with the ground and then reaches to its peak height in the center of the building. The storage building is located at 5.3 feet off the north property line in lieu of the required 10 feet. We do have a letter of support from our neighbor, immediately near the side of that property to the north. The storage facility was a requirement to meet the, the New York State DEC regulations for the storage and recycling of e-waste. Uh, my client Allied Scrap represents several large corporations, Canon USA, Telfonic, IRS, General Electric, Department of Homeland Security, Town of East, Town of Smithtown e-waste contract. And under the updated DEC regulations, he was required to have dry storage for the e-waste. And as you can imagine, over the last several years, the amount of e-waste has, uh, you know, risen tremendously. Everything is disposable now, TVs, computers, monitors, all these things, uh, all these things now, you know, have a two, three, four-year cycle. Uh, they don't last very long and they all get scrapped. So he had to build the building. He needed room to store the material. And yes, he created his hardship by not filing for the permits and holding the proper setback.
It's a pretty big building to build without a permit, man. 60 by 100.
I, 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 I agree. I acknowledge that.
Well, I mean, it's not on you. It's on your client, but I, you know, the, the fact is that, um, you know, this isn't. I, I mean, I don't know how the baler hut, you have some, some measurements on, but I mean, this is no small shed. This is a substantial structure.
Yeah, I'm looking at the pictures now.
So when, when was it built? Do you know?
I don't have the data when it was put up over the last year or so, I think.
Will, Will, did Deirdre give us an aerial photograph following that site plan? There it is. So this is a 2016 aerial.
The 2016, it is not there. It is on the current Google Earth aerials. Uh, I can, I, I don't have the data of that one in front of me, uh, but it would be located in the area. You see the brown roof which is on the property to the north of us. It starts just to the west of that brown roof on, on my client's property. Uh, you can see from the photograph here that there are great men of buildings in here, around here that go up to the property line, specifically the large scrap facility, two doors to our south. Has buildings all along the property line there. Again, no excuse for not getting a permit.
Well, especially since they were just in in 2013. So I mean, yeah, it's not like they hadn't had interaction with the town any time.
We, we, we do have a memo from planning, Dieter Ryan, if you'd like me to read it. And I could.
What does it say, Mr. Chairman, in some substance, if I may ask?
It said, with regards to leaving accessory building approximately 60 by 100, having a side yard of 5, 3 instead of 10. And another accessory building having a side yard of 3 instead of 10, this is a 47% and 70% relief being sought by the applicant. Although this is an individual area, the encroachment into the side yard is substantial, especially in relation to the size of the buildings. Both buildings were also built without permits, making this a self-imposed hardship. There is precedent, 163-89, 1100 Lincoln Avenue, Holbrook. Permission to erect building, leaving side yard of 2.4 feet instead of required 10 feet. It was granted 1989, about 30 years ago, and seeing as this is the only precedent found for the same relief being sought. Planning does not think this should be used as an example to allow the relief being sought. Planning recommends that the accessory buildings be denied as the relief being sought, which is a basic precedent for the area. Now from Dieter Ryan from planning. That was what we have.
Mr. Robinson, have you had an opportunity to see that?
Yes, I have the memo. I have read it. One comment I would make is it, we, we're really talking about one building. The second building, as mentioned in the report here, is actually a large piece of equipment. It's called a baler. Uh, it is open to the air on the ground. There is a shed structure above that keeps the weather off the machinery. Uh, it's where the scrap metal is put on a conveyor belt, lifted up and made into bales, uh, which are stored on the property for shipping out for, for recycling.
So, yeah, are you saying this, that, that the side yard requirement doesn't apply to it for some reason?
It, it certainly applies to it. He did seek relief and got relief from this board for four-foot side yard to maintain existing walls there and the storage facilities in board of that. I'm just bringing it up as a point. It's a, it's a substantial piece of equipment.
I have to apologize. I wasn't able to get the photographs to be included and Chris is a bit of a Zoom expert himself, so. We're, um, we're working with an attorney sharing documents right now. Thank you, Will, because we don't have our planning representatives. So Chris, if you feel as if you want to share your photos or share anything at this point and you don't think you'll derail us too badly, go right ahead.
No, I'd be happy to share the photographs. I think, you know, it shows that our client, after he got his approvals in 2013, has actually done a very nice job in keeping up the landscaping, the look of the, the facility, and is probably one of the best-looking industrial facilities on this block. I'll, I'll put some pictures.
Low bar, Mr. Robinson, low bar.
Mr. Robinson, although, although we, we probably, everyone on the board here knows this area quite well. You know, how, how, how do we approve? Um, you know, how, how, how do we approve, how do we say yes to you, you and your client? When, you know, for later precedent that could be set. Do you have anything other than that one, uh, planning says no, but maybe you have something that they, you know, they didn't find?
All I could say is, is, is looking at the aerial photographs from a lot of the industrial buildings around here, there's things built right up to the property line. That does not give my client any excuse to do it. He did say in, in board of the curb that was already established as part of the original approval. However, that does not relieve him of the requirement for a structure setback. So we, uh, we would very much like to keep the buildings where they are. Uh, it, it would be quite costly to him to modify the structure. Uh, I do understand it is possible and that we can do it. We would prefer not to do it.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a recommendation? Probably know what I'm going to say, everybody. Why don't we reserve this? Because they're seeking a forty-seven percent relaxation and a seventy percent relaxation. That's something I think we really need to discuss, uh, and also see if there's any precedent other than that nineteen eighty-nine because.
Mr. Wex, I, I agree with you. Uh, I do want to say though, that, you know, we are talking about four feet on a building that's how high? It's eighteen feet high. So I don't know that the setback really does make a difference with respect to effect on surrounding properties, et cetera, et cetera. But, uh, you know, you're, you're right. We need more information. We need to consider it. And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm usually the one who, uh, is opposed to any post-hearing submissions, but I recognize the limitations we have here by meeting on this format. Uh, Mr. Robinson, I, I would like to be able to, um, receive from Mr. Robinson any photographs or other uh, documents he wishes us to consider, uh, if that's okay with you and the rest of the board.
I, I agree with, uh, the reserve. I agree with both your comments. Um, and looking at the aerial, there are there are, uh, buildings that appear to be up to the, built up to the property. You discuss it and see any submissions. I agree.
I would love for one more thing is that being that building, even though it's quite large from the aerial looking down on it, being a Quanzet Hut, it, it is very close to the ground on each end of the building and rises up in a curve. So it doesn't have the appearance of being a large structure on the property line when you look at it from the street. Cause it kind of goes away from the property at a forty-five degree angle or so. It's, it's an arc.
Again, Mr. Robinson, if you want to submit, you know, photographs that demonstrate that, please, by all means, I, I think it would be helpful. Normally I tell you, this is your hearing. This is your chance to do it, but you know, we all recognize what it is we're, we're dealing with and working in the Zoom platform or any other platform other than live. So please feel free to submit anything you want, um, with respect to that, that would demonstrate that.
We will.
Does, uh, anyone wish to be heard in this application? Mary, do we have anyone that wants to be heard?
I don't think so. I only have one person in the attendee panel who I don't recognize and, uh, Chris, uh, did you, did your client want to be heard?
No, I think he was just listening.
Okay, very good. Uh, and one other question. I also have a letter of support from the neighbor to the north, the most impacted neighbor.
Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Messina, take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we reserve decision and give the applicant, uh, let's say, uh, twenty-one days to submit any additional, uh, photographs or documents he wishes us to consider.
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
Reserve, so you know, we have sixty-two days by law. We'll do the best we can to get it out to you.
But the sixty-two days won't start until your submission, right, Mr. Chairman? All right.
Great.
Next application. Number four fourteen dash twenty, David P. Beggins. Permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to ISO town code sixty-eight dash six oh two, leaving a driveway. Having a width of sixteen feet instead of the required eighteen feet, Residence A District, West Side of Shore Lane, number thirty-two, seven hundred fifty-six point twenty-six feet south of East Main Street Bay Shore. Anyone here for the applicant?
Moving him in right now. Will, you're doing a great job.
He's right on it.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Hope Hillier. I am here for the applicant, David Beggins. I believe he is also online.
Here, I'm asking him to start his video if he wants. He doesn't have to.
How are you tonight?
I am very well, thank you. It's a pleasure to see everyone, even if it's on a Zoom meeting. Even if it's just on a Zoom meeting. So again, my name is Hope Hillier. I am here for the applicant, Mr. David Beggins. My office is located in Sound Beach, New York. We are here before you this evening to request permission to establish an accessory apartment. And we are also requesting a minor variance on the driveway that's existing because the engineering department has found that it is, um, sixteen feet wide instead of the required eighteen feet. And you'll see by the photographs that that's because there's a portcote that goes over the driveway and the pillars are what makes it the sixteen feet wide. There's more than adequate space in the behind the portcote in front of the garage for parking.
You can see that. So you're, you're stating that just the columns of, uh, I don't know how to say that word. You just said, I apologize.
Roofed over part that you drive through. Yes, that.
You're on my level now.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I was thinking the exact same thing.
I think Joanne Hummel. It's only because of Joanne Hummel that I can say these things.
Well, there you go. Hats, hats off to her.
Exactly. So yes, it's only because of the pillars for the roofed over part that you drive through to get back to the garage and the accessory apartment that we are choosing to establish is the second story of the garage interconnected with the home.
And everything else, uh, apartment size six hundred, seven hundred sixty-three square feet, everything else seems to comply. Does anybody wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Nicole, I'll take a motion.
I'll make it, Mr. Chairman. I'll move that we grant the, uh.
He was making it. I heard him next door. Chris is yours.
I'm sorry.
We can't hear him in all manner.
Try again, Chris.
Motion, motion to grant the application for a period of three years as it pertains to the accessory apartment and to grant a portion of the application regarding the driveway width.
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
I hear, I hear this is, uh, I hope I hear this may be, uh, your last, uh.
Second to last, I have one more accessory apartment to establish. Actually, it's two family, family use only for a very, very nice family in Hope.
And then what are you doing?
Uh, walking the beach and working on my garden.
You're gonna retire? Really?
Yeah, hanging up my shingle, Vinnie.
Wow.
Yeah.
Congrats.
Thirty-four years. It's been a long time. You know, there's a lot of other nice people that want your help.
Some would call that a start, Hope.
Yes, I understand.
It's a warm up.
Yeah, well, I may not be long. We'll see. Covid, covid has really changed things. It's, it's difficult at best. This is a face-to-face profession.
Yeah, that's true. That's very true.
Yes. But don't worry, I'll be back. I'll pester you and I'll check in. Yeah, and I'll sit in on meetings.
Thank you so much.
Have a great one. Thanks.
Have a good night. All right. Next application, number four fifteen dash twenty, Joseph Sampson, Permission to leave second story deck having side yards of eleven point eight feet, nine point six feet instead of the required eighteen feet each, until leave driveway, having side yard of three feet instead of required four feet, Residence Double A District, West Side of Walnut Avenue, number twelve oh six, three hundred forty-six point four nine feet north of Wall Street, Bohemia, New York. Is anyone here for the applicant?
Yes. Moving him in right now. Walter, can you hear us? See how he's doing.
There we go. I'm mute. I'm unmuted and I just turned my video on. Edward Volter, I'm the, uh, applicant for the owner. Joseph Sampson.
How you doing?
How are you?
Please.
Just an address to the record, please, Mr. Walter.
Seven hundred Lakeland Avenue, Suite Two B, isn't boy, Bohemia, New York, one one seven one six.
Great. How are you tonight?
Good. How are you?
Good. State your case, please.
So, uh, my client, uh, started building a deck, uh, and didn't realize he, a second story deck and didn't realize he needed, uh, building permits. Um, his property is a very unique property. It seems to be existing non-conforming that it's only fifty feet wide and it's like four hundred and something feet deep. Um, the second story deck that he started erecting in March is already, is built to the already established side yard setbacks of the house. And it more than has the required rear yard setback that it would need for the zone that it's in.
Dinner bell.
So he, he did not go any outside the footprint of the, the side yards, just.
He has not gone beyond the already established side yard setbacks of the existing dwelling.
What is on either side of him where the deck is located?
Residential homes.
So that you can see the residential homes from the deck, right?
I believe his deck is behind. Uh, if you look where you have your.
I don't have, I don't have an aerial in front of me, so if anyone can get that up on the screen, that might be helpful.
It's up on, I see it on the screen. You don't see it.
Okay, here it is. Yep, yep. And where's the, where's the subject? Oh, okay. I mean, the, the, Mr. Chairman, as you know, the concern I always have with second story decks is an impact on privacy of the neighbors. And, um, you know, there, there is that concern, although.
The aerials, it does not.
It doesn't look like it, they can look right into the house, right?
Yeah, the houses seem to be set forward, um, where his house is. Um, uh, we don't, uh, we don't have planning, sorry.
We do have a memo on this one, John.
We do have a memo on it. Hold on.
Yeah, is it in the file?
I got it right here. Yep.
Okay. And we did have, uh, shortly after this application was filed, we did have a neighbor calling to be sure that the application had been filed and it seemed to me that that neighbor was in opposition. I moved one person into the panel who I wasn't able to chat with and, um, you're in the panel now. Sorry, you come up as Gina D'Ambrosio.
I'm sorry, I'm Joe Sampson.
Oh, okay.
I'm using my girlfriend's computer. I was a little behind on the Zoom.
Alias is not permitted here.
Sorry about that.
Okay, well, that's good. So then I will speak for the person who called the office shortly after the application was filed and that person was, um, you know, concerned about her privacy. She's the adjacent property owner to the south.
And I, and I, I can understand that and we see many of these, uh, second story decks that could look directly into the house, but according to the, looking at this area, it seems like the second story deck is going to be um, west of all of the buildings, to the north and south of them.
I think, I think some of the concern had been and, and, you know, this is the impacts from what you're seeing there in twenty sixteen have changed dramatically. The deck has been erected, obviously, but I think a lot of that vegetation that is just north of the pool has been removed.
I'm sorry, did I miss the playing memo? What did planning have to say?
I'm, I'm gonna read that right now.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't know if I missed it.
Planning, um, wrote with regards to the second story deck having a side yard eleven eight and, and eleven six instead of required eighteen feet. The relief salt would be thirty-five, uh, thirty-four percent relaxation where no variances for this type of deck has been granted within the area. With the house that is already very close to the property line, I believe that this would further hinder the neighbors on either side um, of this property. If this was a deck on grade, that might be a different matter, but because this is extended, extending from the second story, the height will compromise any sense of privacy for the adjacent properties. Planning recommends a second story deck be denied and most planning would be content with the side yard of fifteen feet.
Can I speak for a moment?
Sure.
Um, so my, my neighbor to the left of me, if you're looking at that has the pool does not have any, has any opposing views of the deck being built. The neighbor to the right that owns both properties, there is heavy vegetation and trees to where there's, there's no way you could even see in the property. My whole backyard is filled with trees on both sides and it and even both, behind the guy with the pool, there's, there's still wooded area there.
So, but, but, but Mr. Sampson, the, the, the issue is privacy of your neighbors. So you're arguing, I guess, that existing conditions are such that it maintains the privacy. Apparently your neighbor doesn't share that. Is there something you'd like to propose that might enhance your application by providing additional privacy to at least that neighbor, if not both?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I have Lillian Cypress trees that are there now that are about eight foot tall.
I, I'm not talking about vegetation. I'm talking about, are you willing to put up some kind of screen on each side of the, uh, the deck that you built apparently without a permit? And, um, that way perhaps enhancing your neighbor's privacy.
Sure, that could work.
But, Mr. Messina, do, do we have, do we have a letter from the, the opposing neighbor or, or, or we?
I'm relying on Ms. Passaro's representation.
Yeah, we, we definitely spoke to somebody shortly after the application was filed, Mr. Sampson, and I, unless you think that that person has reconsidered?
No, I mean, I, I've seen this person and dealt with her and um, we talked about it. I, I'd be able to put up a screening if things that would, uh, work, but.
Mr. Chairman, uh, how, how is a screening put up if it's on the second floor, second story deck?
You would put it up on the sides, Mr. Wex, or like, you know, something eight feet high extending or six feet high or something like that.
Mr. Messina, are you talking about a lattice that would extend from a railing of the deck?
Something that denser than the lattice, but yeah.
But something like that, that would extend from the railing of the deck, not necessarily from the ground up.
Not from the ground. I meant, what I meant was the floor of the deck. You're right, Mr. The.
Right.
Yes, absolutely.
So it would almost be like it was walled in, but.
Oh, almost, right. That, that's, it gives you the same, uh, it, it, it gives the same privacy impact.
I'm concerned with the, I mean, it's a, we don't have that many fifty footers. It's so narrow to begin with. Gives me cause for concern, but.
That's the, but i- if, if, in my, I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Wexler. If, if this house was looking over into the neighbor's pool or looking over into the neighbor's windows, I would, I would agree with you a hundred percent, but this, it appears from the pictures that we have here and, and the aerial, there's vegetation everywhere.
I think that this is, I'm, I'm sorry, John, please continue.
He does have an odd property being narrow and, and deep. Um, and honestly, that's why he's in front of the zoning board. A little relief.
Did, did planning's memo state that the, the screening would mitigate their concerns?
No.
No, that was my, that was my bright idea.
I, I think that perhaps if we're gonna go in that direction, this might be one that we have to reserve to discuss, uh, planning's opinion on screening.
Conditions?
Yeah, that, that could be potentially, I could see planning having an issue with that and then messing up their grand plan.
They, they can, and I agree, Ms. Nicole, I, I agree with your, your concept, but they gave us their opinion on it. They didn't say anything about screening. Make a decision whether we, whether we amend the code or not. I, I don't know why we have to get them back involved to.
All right.
Some sort of screen, but I'll, I'll, I will always respect your opinion and if you want to reserve and talk to them, we can, but.
And another thing is I, I, I have to wonder if attaching a, uh, what, a six foot, eight foot wall, whatever, to the side of this deck is gonna trigger some sort of other variance required, although I can't think of one off the top of my head, it would not surprise me in the least.
No, maybe come some form of structure.
That's kind of what I'm thinking.
There's a structure. Anything with component parts is a structure under the code.
Up, there we go.
I got re- to the meeting. I'm sorry, guys. I, I just got back in again. Thank you very much. I, I don't know where, where we let, where I left off when the battery on my computer died.
Oh, we didn't. Who's speaking?
The applicant. The, the applicant for the homeowner.
Um, you know what? I'm going to kind of, uh, echo what Mr. Nicole you said, why don't we reserve this? There's a lot of questions, I think, and it's substantial due to the, the narrowness of the property.
Okay.
Unless, unless somebody thinks I'm off base.
No.
I, I, I just have, I just don't want to see us approve something that is gonna get shot down later and we're gonna have to do this again.
And can we re- rehash the issues while we're reserving decision on this?
Well, I have a little concern as the person, see, we encourage pre-hearing participation now in these times of covid. So we did receive phone calls from somebody who was quite concerned about the deck and, um, your, your client, Mr. Sampson, seems to be aware of who that person is.
Okay.
While we're here and we're discussing screening or not screening, I don't know where that person is and I'm concerned that due to the technology, that person wasn't able to attend this hearing virtually.
Okay.
So unless you wanted.
Ms. Passaro expressed then what she was advised by the neighbor in terms of their privacy concerns. And the board always shares privacy concerns on second story.
You, you know what, I've, you know, I'm very friendly.
You, you know what, I've, you know, I'm very friendly with both my neighbors and she owns both the properties to the right, one that she rents out with the, who the tenants, very friendly, he's had come over for a barbecue. Her house is two houses from that on the right. Um, I mean, I could take aerial photos. I'm new to the neighborhood. I've, uh, you know, we're just making the house nice and livable, you know, and.
We don't need a second story deck to make a house livable, sir. I mean, with all due respect, you know, you, you may have some unique circumstances here because of the configuration of the lot. You may in, in fact have a solution for, you know, addressing privacy concerns, but you don't need a second story deck to make a house live. I, I just don't accept that premise.
Just adding one more thing, if we were to grant this, and again, I don't know what we're going to do, we will then forever bind the neighbors that when they buy that house, they'll have to worry about what they can build or how they use their backyards with a second story deck staring down at them. We have to take that into consideration.
I, I think that maybe we should reserve and discuss this. Um, is there anyone else, anyone further wish to be heard in this application?
And, and, uh, just as a side note, there, there are, are other properties in, in the neighborhood, I believe, up on Honey Court, that a few of those homes also have second story balconies that overlook their own backyards as well as their neighbors.
And do they get the variance relief from this board?
I'm presuming they have a variance because the home.
Presume anything, they could be illegal too, some guys just like your client built without.
Or they could have not needed a variance.
Or they could have not needed a variance, or frankly, they may be well outside of the five hundred foot radius that we would normally consider.
Well, the only reason why we needed a variance is because we have existing nonconforming property that doesn't have the, doesn't have the required setbacks on.
What do you mean, what do you mean the only reason? That is the reason. What do you mean the only reason? You don't comply with the code. You're like every application, I think we get eight, nine hundred a year. I don't understand what you mean, the only reason.
Well, well, they, they obviously, the house on this portion of property has a CO and when the house was constructed, obviously, there weren't the same setbacks that they're trying to enforce today. Um.
I still don't know what you mean by the only reason. That triggers, uh, an application for the zoning board.
Excuse me, Mr. Wexler, Mr. Wexler, we, we hear what you're saying and I, I think that, um, with the unique width of your property, um, and, and your second story deck that your client built, we need to discuss it as a board and go over the area and, and do a little research on it. So I think it would benefit, um, all here if we just, uh, see if anyone would like to, else would like to be heard and we can reserve the decision and we'll do it as fast as we can to get your, your client a decision.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Sullivan, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reserve decision.
Blacken.
All in favor?
Aye.
If you reserve, you know, we have sixty-two days by law. We'll do the best we can to get it done as soon as possible.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Next application number four sixteen dash twenty, Jamie Melon, Melon. Permission to leave decking varying height, having rear yards of nine point one feet and ten point two feet instead of the required fifteen feet each and side yards of fourteen point four feet and eleven point one feet instead of the required fifteen feet each. Residence B double A district, east side of Birch Walk, number eighty-nine, one hundred sixty feet south of Central Walk, Bear Harbor. Is anyone here for the app?
Hi Charlie, can you hear us?
Yeah, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mr. Brody.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, hope all as well.
How's everything with you?
Good, good, thank you. Everything's well, thank you.
Good, good. Name and address for the record for us?
Uh, yes, Charles Broody, architect, thirty, Bethesda Lane, Naval New York, one one seventy-two, representing the homeowner.
Great, state your case.
Okay, so as stated in the call, we are seeking, uh, both side and rear yard setbacks for these two decks that were built approximately ten years ago. Um, with consideration to that, there is a utility path behind the property before the next property, uh, piece begins. Um, again, with the original footprint, I'm not sure, Mary, if I handed in the old survey, which show the existing decks and the one-story shed structure, uh, on the property. And then these two decks were constructed around that.
Uh, can, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but Mary, I see the blue, looks like a boomerang on the overhead. Is it the property to the left of it or is it like an arrow pointing to the right? Which is the subject property?
Will, I see you smiling, Will. You tell us how you did this document sharing.
This, I believe that the property is the one, um, not at the point of the curve, to the left of the curve, if you're looking at it, Mr. Wexler.
So it's on the inside of the curve?
Exactly. He's going, he's trying to go from property line to property line, showing you that's the.
Oh, I wasn't sure if that was an arrow.
No, I, I can understand what you're saying. I just was trying to.
He's far more technically adept than I, so I defer to Mr. Garber.
I just wanted to know which property it was.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's the more rectangular, square piece of property.
No, wait, 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 the more square is.
That's vacant land.
All right, no, I, all right, all right. If it's, if it's the property, can somebody just zoom in so I know for sure? On, up, now I lost the.
Okay.
All right, yeah.
Who's got the technical ability to zoom in on the piece of property? Or use the pointer?
Yeah, just point with the mouse arrow.
Yeah.
Yes, it is on the east side of Birch Walk, so it probably isn't.
I lost the overhead. I'm not, okay.
There we go.
So which can, I, you're on the street.
It has the blue mark, it has the blue mark next to it, right?
Yes, this, the blue mark to the, to the, to the east.
All right, put the cursor, please, put the cursor, please, on the subject part.
Oh, it's the white.
The big white one.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
It is on the outside of the curve, Mr. Wexler.
So it's on the outside of the boomerang?
Yeah.
I thought it was the inside, I'm sorry.
Me too.
All right.
I guess the boomerang is an arrow.
I, that's what I wasn't sure what, all right, now we know what we're talking about. All right, thank you.
Either way, Mr. Brody, um, do, do you, I'm sure you've done your research with Fire Island Properties. Is there precedent in the area for decks? I'm sure there are, it's Fire Island.
Uh, there are many precedents for decks and, and side yard setbacks.
That are greater or, or equal to the ones you're asking for?
Uh, yes, there are.
Within five hundred foot?
Yes, there are.
Okay.
And again, I, I would just note that again, we're prejudiced by the fact that there's no one here from the planning department. So, but, Mr., I, I take Mr. Brody at his word and I think Mr. Wexler is more than familiar with the area, so. I'll defer to, I'll defer to him.
Yep.
All right, does anyone, should we heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Wexler, I'll take a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion that we grant the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next application number four one seven dash twenty, Stefan G. Guarino. Permission to leave hot tub, having building separation of three feet instead of the required six feet, Residence B District, east side of Chester Road, number nine eleven. One thousand four hundred sixty-five feet south of Sixth Street in Sable. Is anyone here for the app?
Moving them in right now?
I'm Stephen Guarino, I'm here.
How are you?
Fine, thank you. How are you?
Is anyone else here for you? I have another name, Andrew Malguanera, um, on, listed on this, is, is that your?
Yeah, he's the expediter.
There he is. Name and address for the record, please.
Stephen Guarino, nine eleven Chester Road, Sable, New York.
Andrew Malguanera, seven thirteen Main Street, Port Jefferson agent.
How are you guys tonight?
Very well.
Very, very well, thank you.
Seeking building separation three feet instead of six feet. As I always say, I've never seen a hot tub with water go on fire and burn a house down, but.
Rule, rules the rules.
Indeed.
Yeah, won't be joking. Um, we see this a lot. I, I believe it's the minimus who, uh, check, um, see if anyone wishes to be heard and see if the board has any questions. Do you guys have anything to say for the record?
Uh, you said it perfectly clear.
Smart man.
Wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Sullivan, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Application granted and dead hot tub.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, good night.
Next application number four hundred and eighteen dash twenty, Julian and Jennifer Benjamin. Permission to leave driveway outside property line, not having required setback of four feet, Residence B District, north side of West Walnut Street, number nine. Three hundred feet west of Isop Avenue, Isop, New York. Is anyone here for the applicant?
Hold on, give me one second. Oh, okay, yes. Are they coming? Roman, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Chairman and Board. This is Jonathan Roman with the Law Office of Roman and Puccini, office address nineteen seventy-nine Marcus Avenue, Suite two ten, New Hyde Park, New York, one one zero four two. Good evening. How was everyone?
How are you tonight?
Yeah, not too bad, hanging in there for sure.
Great, great. So you're here seeking permission to drive it, it's on the side property line?
Correct, yep. Uh, we're just requesting the variance, uh, to leave the driveway that, uh, does not have the required setback of four feet. Um, you know, I believe that it, um, qualifies under all the requirements as it would be an undue burdensome, uh, unduly burdensome for my clients to have to remove that and, uh, property is unique in which that, that's really kind of the only location where the driveway could be permissible.
All right, it only seems to be a very small portion of the line.
Correct.
The entire side. We see these, we see these a lot. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Wexler, I'll take a motion.
I'll make the motion that we grant the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, granted, have a good night.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.
You too, sir. Application number four nineteen dash twenty, Christopher and Anne Marie Helmke. Permission to leave driveway, having a side yard of two feet instead of required four feet, Residence double A District, northeast side of Inlet Court, number nineteen, four hundred and seventy-seven point seventy-six feet north of Ocean Avenue, Bohemia. Is anyone here for the applicant?
Move them in. Can you hear us, Mr. Helmke?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, how are you tonight?
Okay, I'm sorry, let me just get on that there. Here I am, okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Yeah, my name is Christopher Helmke, nineteen Inlet Court, Bohemia, New York.
Great, you're here seeking permission to leave your driveway, um, having side yard of two feet instead of four. It appears from the survey, it's only a small portion of the driveway, kind of pairs in as you get closer to the house.
Yes.
Great, seems the minimus. Uh, does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Sullivan, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Application granted, sir, have a good night.
All right, thanks very much.
Next application number four twenty dash twenty, Christopher and Christina Fucci. Permission to leave second story deck fourteen by, eight point five feet by twenty feet irregular, having a side yard of ten point eight feet instead of required fourteen feet, Residence B District, east side of Malmec Court, number eighteen, one hundred fifty-five point three seven feet south of Stanley Street, West Islop. Is anyone here for the applicant? Anyone here for the applicant?
He was just on.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
How are you, sir?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Name and address, please. And also.
Christopher Fucci, eighteen Malmec Court, West Isop, New York.
And also Richard Bavone, three zero eight East Meadow Avenue, East Meadow, appearing as the agent for Christopher and Christina Fucci of eighteen Malmec Court, West Islop.
Great, how are you guys tonight?
Living the dream. On my line.
So were you here, were you here for the last second story deck application?
Yes.
You have a little different situation though, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Tell us how.
So we have a fourteen foot six by twenty foot deck, second story deck, which is located in a rear yard attached to the dwelling. It has a difference of a setback of three point two feet. It's approximately ten square feet plus or minus. When you look at the site plan which we submitted, it's almost like a triangle if we were uh, to comply with the zoning code, the actual setback is ten point eight feet where fourteen feet is required. Um, this is the minimus, it's a minor variance request, uh, due to the, uh, shape of the existing property. The property to the south is a municipal, either a recharge basin due to the drainage event that's located in the rear yard of the property. Uh, the surface when the pool application was filed with the town, the, uh, building department looked at the remainder of property and we filed now to legalize the existing uh, second story deck which leads off at a kitchen area. Uh, for the record, we also have been speaking with the town attorney's office, Mr. Canova, and also Nancy Kelly of Public Works in reference to the two structures over the drainage event, which are not part of this hearing, but noted in, in the actual denial. And we're in the process of working out an agreement with them after they visit the property. We received, you, go ahead.
Okay, finish, sorry.
We received three letters. My client went around to the neighbors, the immediate neighbors, nineteen Malmec Court, twenty-four Malmec Court, and also four sixteen Arcadia Drive, which on an overview, that is the property, um, that is closest to where this deck is, but actually you won't even see it because of the uh, large screening and vegetation and, uh, shrubbery from the, uh, property, which is not really, um, uh, used at any means. And they did receive a letter from that neighbor indicating that they have no objection to this board granting an approval.
The only, the only part is the corner of this deck, the, I guess you'd call it the southwest corner of this deck that's, uh, encroaching in a fourteen, correct?
Yes, that is correct. It's a very small area of the deck.
There's nothing to the south other than a town recharge, recharge basin, correct?
That is correct.
It, Mr. Chairman, if I may just make a point, there may be a lot of good reasons to grant it, but ta- listening to the term used earlier that is de minimis, that's not one of the reasons. I'm looking at it as a, almost thirty percent relaxation. That's not de minimis.
I, I couldn't agree with you more, Mr. Wexler. I think though that what this applicant has that, uh, another one.
No, I, I agree. That's why I said there's a lot of good reason to grant.
But you are absolutely correct. I, I.
De minimis.
Yep, yep.
I agree with you, but in defense of the applicant, I think he was just saying because it's just the rear corner of this deck. That rear one side of the corner. That's my, that was my take on it anyway, although I'm not as.
No worries.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Wexler, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the application, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Application granted, sir. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too. Application number four twenty-one dash twenty, Alexander A. Mars, the fourth. Permission to erect second story addition thirty point five feet by thirty-three feet irregular, leaving a front yard of thirty-seven point five feet into a recto porch, six feet by twenty-four point eight feet, leaving a front yard of thirty-three point six feet instead of required forty feet each. Uh, addition and alteration resulting in new dwelling, having a front yard of thirty-nine point six feet instead of the required forty feet and to leave a driveway on the side property line, not having required setback of four feet, Residence A District, north side of Stanley Street, number eight seventy-five, four hundred fifty feet west of Malts Avenue, West Islop. Is anyone here for the applicant?
Alex Morris here for eight seventy-five Stanley Street, West Islop, one one seven five.
Evening, sir. How are you tonight?
Doing well, thank you.
Do you like to state your case or is someone else gonna be here for you?
Nope, I'll be stating my case for tonight.
So you're, uh, seeking permission to erect a second story addition? Um, little front yard relief and roofed over porch, it's asking for a little more front yard relief than you have now, correct?
Yes, it's about, just, just under a foot, that's correct.
Um, in the old, do you know what the old dwelling sits at right now? I believe it's.
On existing condition survey is stapled to the plot plan.
I got it here, thirty-nine point six.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a question? I'm looking at the front page. There it is. It says lot size twelve. What is that? Twelve hundred, what is that number? Twelve hundred?
Twelve hundred and fifty square feet.
So typo.
It's, it is because it's seventy-five by one fifty.
So it's, what is that, twelve thousand five hundred?
Eleven two fifty.
Eleven two fifty.
That's a hundred A lot.
What's, what's a one between friends, Mr. Wexler?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, yes.
Sir, do you, you know of any, um, present in the area for the front yard relief?
No, not that I'm aware of.
But this isn't significantly more than what was already there, right?
No. It's less than one foot, like I said.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Have any questions?
I'll make a motion that we grant the application, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Application granted.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Sir. Have a good night. Uh, number four twenty-two dash twenty, James and Melissa Collins, permission to leave second story addition, having a height. Of twenty-eight point nine six feet, instead of the permitted twenty-eight feet, Residence B District North Side of Elm Street, number thirty-one. Four hundred twenty-five feet west of Ferndale Boulevard, Isop. Is anyone here for the applicant?
A or? There we go.
Sorry about that, I was still muted. James Collins, thirty-one Elm Street, Isop, New York, one one seven five one. Good evening. Members of the board, chairman.
So you, uh, built a second story addition and it's a little bit too high?
Um, apparently, yes, that's, that is the case.
Did you have a permit when you built the addition?
Yes, absolutely. We did, and we did seek a variance for our, uh, far percentage, which you approved.
Yep, six hundred dash eighteen is the application number, August twenty-ninth to two thousand nineteen. A little bit off on the measurement.
Depends also how you measure sometimes, Mr. Chairman, as you well know, right? So.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Board have any questions? Mr. Wexler, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the application, Chairman.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Application granted, sir.
Thank you all. Have a great evening. Take care.
You too. Next application number four twenty-three dash twenty, Maya Realty Group LLC. Permission to leave retaining wall over eighteen inches high on the property line, not having the required setback of four feet. Leave a six-foot fence on the retaining wall on property line, not having a required setback of ten feet. And to leave driveway on the side property line, not having a required setback of four feet, Residence AAA District. Southeast corner of John Street, number one twenty-two, and MacArthur Boulevard, Hot Pog. Is anyone here for the applicant?
Hi, good evening, yes.
Evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Sure, Shadi Sumac, one twenty-two John Street, Hot Pog, New York, one one seven eight eight.
Could you just spell that first name for me, please?
Sure, Shadi, S H A D I.
Who's that handsome man with you, man?
My brother.
Your name, sir, if you're gonna speak?
My name is Ramin, same last name, R A M I N.
How are you tonight?
Good.
We're good. How about you guys?
Good, thank you. Would you like to state your case?
Um, yes, we're asking permission to be able to leave the retaining wall as well as the driveway on the side property. Um, we bought this house and it already had the fence and retaining wall as well as the driveway is placed where it's placed. And we're actually in the process of closing on this property, so we ask if you could please grant our application.
How high is that retaining wall that's over eighteen inches high, you know?
Four feet.
That's well over eighteen inches.
And you have a six-foot fence on top of it?
Yeah, because, um, it's a side, it's a side property right on MacArthur, so there's a lot of traffic going in and out. As well as there's a pool on the property, so we make, you know, the fences for protection.
So, but this, if you, I don't know if you guys can see, the board can see that picture, it's kind of a hazy picture, but.
Is it sloping there, Mr. Chairman?
It slopes, um, you know, I think most of Hot Pog slopes, but.
Yeah, that's why I asked.
Yeah, it slopes. I'm not sure, you know, they have these one, I'm not sure. Needs the six-foot fence on top of it or, or the height of that wall.
For safety.
Do we have any photographs? Because I'm envisioning a six-foot fence, which we normally don't allow.
Trying to show you right here.
On top of a four-foot retaining wall. I'm vis- envisioning something very.
Ten feet, right?
Can you see this?
I can't, I'm just looking at the aerial.
Vinnie and Bill, I just forwarded them to your emails. I don't know if you have.
You sent to me as well, please?
I will.
I have a question for the applicant. Is the retaining wall facing, are you downhill of the retaining wall? Is the, is the, the face of the retaining wall facing your property? Or is it holding your property from falling into another property? If you kind of get what I'm saying.
No, it's facing, everything's on, it, it's not attached to anything of anybody else.
Can you guys, can you guys see this?
It's a corner property.
We, I, I can kind of see that, Mr. Chairman, but I really don't know. I can't identify.
To you what, what is the, the neighbor, the neighbor to, um, the. Hold on one second, the neighbor to the south behind the pool. The retaining wall appears from the pictures, at the top of the retaining wall, it appears to be the property of the neighbor to the south. The, um, so, so the applicant's property slopes down to the south and that's what that retaining wall is. Then on top of that retaining wall, I believe just from this picture, that that retaining wall needs to be there or the southern property is gonna fall into their property.
Exactly.
Yes.
However, the fence on top of it is a whole different story.
The fence is for the safety of the people that they are working with.
Is the fence on the south side of the property and also on the west?
Yes.
Is on the south side and also on the west, according to the pictures, yes, Mr. Wexler.
So.
But the west.
Rarely, rarely ever leave six-foot or allow six-foot fences, uh. Along a road, uh, in between two properties, that's not as traumatic.
To interrupt you, Mr. Wexler, it appears from the pictures that the westerly retaining wall fence. Is not the six-foot, it's, it's smaller, appears to be maybe four-foot.
Yes.
On top of that retaining wall. I don't know if you can see this picture, that's the westerly side, um, it's there.
Yes.
But is it essentially eight feet? If it's four on four, I, I'm, I'm. I'm in the dark because I can't, I don't have any photographs in front of me.
No, it, it is essentially eight feet. The westerly property line is on MacArthur Boulevard. There is a retaining wall, it appears, and then a four-foot fence on top of it. The southerly property line behind the ingrown pool has a four-foot retaining wall and then a six-foot fence, but that. Backs up to the neighbor's property which.
No, I see that, that, so really, the point of contention for me is MacArthur Boulevard. Why they need eight foot of screening when we don't even allow six feet?
That close.
Yeah, sure.
But, but the, it's only six feet, I believe, it's not eight feet, it's underground.
Well, it's, it's four feet and four feet, right? You have four feet of retaining wall and four feet of fence that would make eight feet of height.
Oh.
I mean, I'm looking, I'm looking at a picture of you, of somebody on a ladder, power washing it, and they're not even near the top of it.
That's the rear, that's the rear one.
Rear.
It's not the top.
The, the westerly one, um, is smaller than that, Chris, if you see.
That's the middle photo, right? I, here's my concern, we allow four feet. Is that the middle photo with the ladder leaned against the retaining wall but not?
Yes, correct.
But is it short ladder too?
Yes.
So we allow.
It's a short ladder.
We allow four feet on the property line of the fence, not six feet. This is a fence, uh, essentially eight feet. I, I don't know how we can grant it.
Mr. Wexler, um, I know you can't see the pictures and I'm not trying to disagree with you, but. The four feet would start at the top of that retaining wall because. It appears in the picture that MacArthur Boulevard would fall into their property without that retaining wall.
Okay, so you, what you're saying is that the impact is the same as a four-foot fence.
Exactly. That's what the picture appeared to show.
All right, I'll take your, your word, Mr. Chairman, uh, so in, in that event, I, I, I shared Mr. Wexler's concern, but. With, uh, that statement, I, I, I would not have such opposition.
But if you want, if you want to see the pic, Mr. Wexler, did you get the email?
Well, I, I don't know, I don't have my phone handy. I didn't want to run inside the house, but, uh, Mr. Chairman, you have it if. You believe that it essentially is four feet, not six or eight, that satisfies my issue.
Yeah, I, I do, I do believe that, sir.
That's, that's good enough for me.
John, I, I had asked the applicant, Shadi, to, uh, send in also a photo of how the fence looks from MacArthur Boulevard. I'm looking for it in my email, but I think you emailed it to Mary Ann, not to me, so. John, you have that photo there?
I do, yep.
It's hard to decipher it because it's just a photo of a fence taken straight on from the middle of MacArthur Boulevard.
Just once.
So that.
All right, I, I, I see it, I get it.
Yeah.
It looks like it's a level property until you get into their backyard and then it's four feet down.
Yeah, right.
I just have, I just have one question, um, because I do know that the property to the south has a driveway on the north side of its property. Are you in contact with the neighbor to the south and do you believe that they can safely get out of their driveway in spite of the fence there?
Absolutely.
Yes to both?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Messina, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the application.
Second.
Thank you guys so much.
Have a good night.
Good night. You too, thank you.
All right, next application number four twenty-four dash twenty, twenty-nine South Clinton Avenue Corp. Permission to leave a reconstructed five-family dwelling unit as per ISO Town Code Section sixty-eight dash four fifteen A. Residence C double A District East Side of South Clinton Avenue, number twenty-nine, six hundred ninety point eight seven feet south of South Country Road. Bay Shore. Anyone here for the applicant? Again, is anyone here for the applicant?
He's here.
Okay.
Ray, can you hear us? Might have to unmute yourself.
I don't, I don't see anyone here, Mrs.
Here, let's see, where did he go? Oh, no, he's not here yet.
All right, second call, Mr. Chairman.
No, he's here. I just, I hadn't, I, I thought I moved him to panelist. He's in now. What you drinking, Bill?
Um, don't ask that question, don't answer. On the advice of counsel, don't answer.
Polar, seltzer. Actually, I just keep an empty can here, I'm drinking something else.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of work, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Oh, great, thank you. Sorry about that. Ray, Ray Juicedo, I represent the applicant. Uh, this is an application pursuant to sixty-eight four fifteen A of the town code. To, uh, reconstruct a building that's presently occupied as non-conforming use. Uh, as you can see from the certificate of occupancy that was filed with the application. Uh, the Board of Appeals previously granted a variance for this property back in nineteen fifty-two. Uh, to allow its use from a one-family dwelling to a five-family apartment house. That use has been in effect for the last sixty-eight years.
Why do you have to reconstruct it, Mr. Juicedo?
Uh, the only thing that my client has done is he, he has completely renovated the interior of the property. The configuration of the rooms has stayed the same. Uh, there was no insulation in the property. It didn't meet current codes. Electrical codes, plumbing codes. Uh, he's made it safer and, and more livable. He's improved. Uh, the property tremendously. The footprint has stayed exactly the same. The use is gonna be exactly the same. The setbacks meet all current zoning, uh, requirements.
So I, I still don't understand why you're here with this call. What was the reconstruction that triggered your coming, having to come to the board of?
Yes, basically.
Just plumbing and electrical, is that what?
Yeah, they, they, he, he was a little surprised, but the, they determined that because he's, he did more than fifty percent demolition. Uh, that, that, that fit, fit under the definition of reconstruction.
Okay, but that's more than electrical and plumbing then. What else did he do?
He not, uh, I, I asked him that and he confirmed to me that he knocked down interior walls. And kept the framing, he updated kitchens. Uh, there was no insulation throughout the entire building. He, he took care of that and, uh.
Yeah, you said that. I just don't understand how they got to fifty percent.
I.
Based on what you're telling me.
Yes, I, I can't answer, uh, why the building department made that decision, but that decision was made.
I do think, Mr. Messina, that it, when you, when the building department sees that when you, for lack of a better term, gut more than fifty percent of the interior of the house. They consider that reconstruction, they said that.
Yeah, I, I, look.
Non-conforming use, really, right?
It is a non-conforming use, that's right.
Don't we, if, if it's a, can, don't we need some sort of proof on the record that this has. Been continuously used as a five-family residence?
Already, it's already CO'd, Mr. Wexler.
The CO for it.
Oh, there's a CO.
Yeah, he, he's, he's not establishing the non-conforming use tonight.
Oh, there's a CO?
Yeah.
They actually, in nineteen sixty-one, they actually went to the Board of Appeal, they increased it from five to nine, and that was denied. But they've always had a five-unit, five-family apartment house. Last time they acquired, granted December eighteen, nineteen fifty-two. Um, under condition that no building to be erected fronting on Bay.
It seems like these were the only people in the fifties that followed the rules and got permission.
We're trying to do the same now.
But is the, did they, was there any sort of calculation done as to how much, what percentage precisely was reconstructed? Uh, how did they arrive at fifty percent? That seems more than taking down wall, taking down, uh, drywall or plaster. And replacing electric and, and plumbing.
I, I really do not know the answer to that.
But planning prepares, and building department prepares a calculation.
Yeah, but the, the denial this stage from, uh, Aldo Benardi, permission to be a reconstructed five-family dwelling. And it has per section sixty-eight dash four fifteen A, that's all it states.
But they prepare, I know the building department will prepare a calculation, that's what they base it on. I mean, is it fifty percent, sixty percent? Do we have any?
Um, that's not necessarily the case. I have seen these come through in my past life. And all it'll say is, you know, more than fifty percent or greater than fifty percent. So I, I don't know that they make that calculation like that. They, they probably would be helpful if they did, absolutely, but.
Cause I've seen, I've seen those calculations.
Okay, yeah, and I've seen it the other way too, so it's.
Their numbers.
Could go either way.
Do we have any input? Do we have any input from planning on this?
No.
Planning, planning's not here. Let me know again, for the record.
So we, we don't have to hear about the, uh, being in the auditorium, now we gotta hear about planning.
You gotta hear me.
Yeah, right, right, right.
It sounds like something that they would have put some input on, I don't know.
I'm looking at, can I say one thing? I'm looking at the pictures, board, um, that are here and submitted, and it does appear they, they just reconstructed. You know, they sided the house, they, um, gutted the walls like down to the studs inside, had to fix some framing. They were insulation, electric, plumbing, it doesn't, doesn't appear like they, you know, blew the house down and re, rebuilt it. I think it was a very old structured house that they just.
Made safer, right?
Made paper, that's what it.
Did they have a permit? Did they have a permit to do any of this?
Yes, they did. And, and the house is now, and you, you also have, I submitted as part of the record, a, a building, uh, envelope. Uh, compliance checklist that you can see that, that the property is much safer now, it's more modern.
I know, let me just interrupt you a second before I get to the wonderful things. Here's my question, and, and maybe Vinnie can answer this. You get a permit.
Right.
To reconstruct.
Sure.
You fill out what you want to do. What triggers ending up before us? Did you go beyond what the permit?
Now, it could just be you're in for your CO and whoever takes a look at what went, you know, what was constructed pursuant to the permit. Uh, may have a different view as to what the requirement is to CO and close out the file. You know, CO the premises and close out the files. So sometimes there are different interpretations. In my experience within the building department. Again, nobody trying to be unreasonable or to hurt anyone, but. You know, it, they, uh, uh, different buildings, a building inspector might take a different view than. The person who approves the permit in the first. different buildings, a building inspector might take a different view than the person who approves the permit in the first instance. It can happen.
I think, Vinnie, what you recall from our past lives, and John, as you said, for lack of a better term, it's when the building gets gutted, that for some reason, the building department makes an interpretation that they can no longer date it by inspection.
Right.
And they become more uncomfortable with the non-conforming status of it.
And again, it's that inspection that triggers this all.
So we know what actually was done to the building.
It would just faceless.
No, I mean, do we have documentation? Do we have some sort of something that, that we can read and say, this is what was there? This is what was done, so we can make some form of intelligent decision.
That would be in the building department's file, if not ours, right, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I can tell you that. I can tell you that.
Hang on, hang on. We started hearing it was some electrical work, and then, as I recall, when our vice chairman, Mr. Messina, who's got the experience, started probing, then we learned about plumbing and walls coming down, and all of a sudden, the application changed. I just don't know.
Yeah, and, and, and Mr. Wexler, my point in asking those questions really was to perhaps correct, from my view anyway, correct the building department in how they're handling these things. If, it, it's always been my position, both as town attorney and as an, an attorney representing, you know, an applicant, that if you give the permit and I build in accordance with that permit, it is, at the very least, manifestly unfair for then you to move the goalposts and say, oh, but wait, now you need this too.
Oh, I agree.
You know, I think that, to me, this is what, it seems that that's what went on here. Again, I can't prove it.
We, you know, not for nothing, and not to doubt the applicant, and I have no reason to doubt him, but we have no idea if that's what occurred, if they moved the goalposts, or if he disregarded the permit completely and just did whatever he wanted. And I'm not saying that's what happened, but we need more information than what's in front of us.
Yeah, we don't know what occurred.
Disregarded, in fairness. If he disregarded, he would have been summoned, right?
Yes, you're right. Or at least a stop, at least a stop work order, but we don't.
Is there any open summonses or stop work orders, Mr. Juista?
No, I, I, that's the point I was going to make before. If he, if he did something outside the parameters of the building permit, he would have been, he would have received the notice of violation, a violation of stop work order. That did not happen.
I know, aren't we speculating? Aren't we spec, we don't know. I would, um.
We're not speculating, Mr. Wexler. I'm looking at the file. There's nothing in it that has that.
No, 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 no. There's a big difference between issuing summonses, let's say, or stop work, or if the work is already done. What's the stop worker?
And if most of this was interior.
Yeah, and they wouldn't even have known. I want to know what was there. Something triggered this, and to, I don't like, I don't feel comfortable just saying, oh, well, two, two town employees can look at it differently and move the goalposts.
Mr. Wexler, if you don't, if you don't feel comfortable, I'll join you in, 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 in seeking to reserve decision and get the information from the building department file. We don't have it.
I have to disagree though. I don't, I don't know what this, what the reason for, for, for this is. He, we, he has a CO for a five-family dwelling, a five-family apartment house. All, all he did, he has no violations on it. He went to the building department, and I'm, I can probably almost guarantee that they just got, well, five, you know, non-conforming use type of lot, building from years and years ago, reconstructed the inside, boom, go to zoning board.
But John, but John, there's, there's nothing, we're at an extreme disadvantage here without having a planning staff member here. We don't know what hap, we don't know if it's fifty-one percent, if it's seventy-nine percent, if it's ninety-five percent.
What does that matter?
Not sure what the relevance of that is.
No, here's, here's the relevance. See, we don't know what, what triggered this. What was reconstructed?
Can I finish? I sent, I, I, I showed, I tried to show you guys.
You there? You there?
I got you.
All right. I, I just, I, I, I'm not doubting him. I just, this is more of a, a knock on the lack of planning staff provided to us. I have, we have no idea what we're even looking at.
Yeah, but I'm trying to tell you, I'm looking at pictures in the file, and you're not letting me talk. And, and it looks like a mere just re-interior reconstruction of an old building that he's making safer and more compliant. There's nothing.
I think we have an obligation, John, to look at documents and not kind of guess.
What document, what document are you going to get? You're going to go to the building department and say, how much did they gut? I'm showing you.
Why not? There must be records.
Or, do we, is there a copy of the permit? Is there a copy of the?
I have it in the file.
Admitted plans, the, or the, we, we don't have any of that, or you might, but I don't.
You don't need to submit plans, Chris, to, to gut an interior of a house.
Yes, you do.
Yes, you do. Of course you do. I don't know about on an in-time replacement, but you would need the plumbing and the electrical.
Right.
Sure, how are they going to grant?
They're going to have to go through those inspections for the plumbing and the electrical. That's not in front of us here tonight.
Why is it a bad idea to look at documentation from the town to make an informed decision? I don't understand why that.
I mean, it's not like we're holding up construction. It's already built.
It's not already built. It's got it.
It's permission, permission to leave a reconstructed five-family dwelling unit.
It's, yes, but the building's been there since the fifties, Chris. It's a five-family apartment.
No, but I, so is the work done or is it not?
It's gutted. I showed you the pictures. You couldn't see it.
Like, no, I cannot see when you hold up a picture to a camera.
Can I, can I just be heard? The issue, the, the, the one and only issue.
You sure you want to wade into this controversy, Mr. Juista?
No, I just, I just want to make a point, play attorney. You know, the only issue before this board is not whether the building department did its job or did not do its job. Look, they, they have a job to do, and they've done it. The only issue is, are you going to let my client continue with the use that's been in existence for sixty-eight years?
But that, no, that's not the only issue. If they have, if it's been reconstructed to such a degree that it doesn't conform to what was there, and I'm, so that's not the only issue. The issue that I'm following is what Mr. Nicole you raised. Was this fifty-one percent or ninety-nine percent reconstruction? We would look at it differently, and we don't know. We have no idea.
And, and I have, I, if, if this is a, as the applicant states or the applicant's council states, and I have no problem with granting it, but I, I have a survey. I don't, I don't have a site, you know, I don't know what was done.
I believe the building department goes off of if you reconstruct more than fifty percent of the interior of a home.
They, absolutely, they do, but they don't, they.
So whether it's fifty-one percent or ninety percent, they're here for a reason, because it's obviously over fifty percent.
Well, by, by, by the same argument, with an eighteen or fourteen-foot setback for a, a raid, a second-story deck, whether it's what, eleven point one, ten point one feet or thirteen point nine feet, they're still in front of it. It's the same argument.
That's not an argument. You have a CO for a five.
No, they have a, yes, they have a CO, and part of having a non-conforming use is you cannot reconstruct it more than fifty percent without board approval. That's.
Why don't?
And I'm just trying to find out what was done.
Why can't we reserve and get some documentation so we know what's done?
Because I, I would agree, I agree with the chairman that it's irrelevant if fifty percent or ninety-nine percent change has been made. They, it meets.
Then why do we have, then why do we have zoning? Why do you need application if it's irrelevant?
It meets all current zoning requirements. The footprint has stayed exactly the same.
Then why do we need zoning if it's irrelevant? Why does there a town code?
Because at one point in time in nineteen fifty-two.
No, that's not the reason. No, that's not the reason. The town code is there for a reason. You know that. If it's greater than fifty percent, you need an application. If there wasn't a rationale for it, we wouldn't be here. We want to know how much. That's like any other zoning application. If it says, if you need a fourteen-foot setback, and all we're told is doesn't have fourteen feet. Does it have thirteen and a half? Does it have five, two? Does it have six inch? We don't know. And I don't think it's such a bad thing to get facts. Maybe I'm wrong.
So does anyone else wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? Make a motion that we reserve applica, uh, decision and get some more facts. And this, Mr. Juista, we, by law, we have sixty-two days. We'll do the best we can to.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Are we taking a post-hearing submission from the applicant?
If he wants.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
That, that's no problem. I'll try to get you whatever information that, that you requested, especially with respect to the percentage of deviation and whatever work was done.
With percentage, to, to the best of your ability. I'm not going to ask you to go in there and do it yourself, you know, whatever's been provided.
Get us copies of your permits, too. That's, that's an easy thing for you to do.
I understand.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next application number four twenty-five dash twenty, Joseph Von Giorno the third. Permission to erect dwelling on a lot having width of one hundred feet instead of required one hundred fifty feet throughout. Lot area of nineteen thousand seven hundred forty-seven square feet instead of the required forty thousand square feet, leaving side yards of fourteen feet instead of required twenty-five feet, each sold side yards of twenty-eight feet instead of required six, sixty feet. Floor area ratio of twenty-eight point four percent instead of twenty-five percent. Residence triple A district, west side of West Lane, number zero, eight hundred forty-two point eight-five feet north of Oakany Walk, Bay Shore. Is anyone here for the?
Yes, Mr. Chairman members of board, Ray Juista. I'm here for the applicant. Actually, with me tonight, socially distancing is Mike Dunn, the architect, and Rosemary Zully, who is the, and her husband is the contract vendor's with the applicant. This is a piece, a parcel, a vacant parcel of land located in the Oakany Association. The Oakany Association was originally developed under Residence A. It changed to Residence Double A, and now eventually, I believe around sixty-two or so became Residence Triple A. The property is about nineteen thousand seven hundred forty-seven square feet. We have a hundred feet of frontage, and the proposal is to erect a single-family dwelling. Part of the record, you will see a single and separate ownership search that was performed by a title company. Unfortunately, these days, due to COVID, the title company was unable to research some of the deeds of record. So according to the report, if you take a look at it, I, I know the town attorney had taken a look at it, and there's a question of whether or not this property has been held in single and separate ownership, and what, for what period of time. We know that the property has at least been held in single and separate ownership since nineteen sixty-three. It may very well be that it was many years prior to that, but unfortunately, due to COVID, we are unable to, to give you that information. So.
Mr. Juista, what is the relevant date that we have to go back to for, for single and separate?
Well, it, it became, uh, from, it went from double A to triple A in nineteen sixty-two. So that's actually one year before we know that, uh, we had single and separate ownership. So, um, that's, that's, that's a relevant date.
How many, do you have any precedent for these types of setbacks? And then, it was, again, it was probably such that it didn't, Board of Appeals approval, but, you know, tell us about the nature and character of the area, please.
Yes, okay. I did submit to, to Mary various documents. One is a actual map of the Oakany Association, which kind of lays out the properties and their, they're, not their dimensions, but you can get a, a, a sense relatively, actually, if you look at the Von Giorno property that's on there, the size of the properties. There are many, many, many substandard properties to the Residence Triple A zoning in the area. Matter of fact, I also submitted to you a list of thirty-three props, thirty-three surrounding properties. I also want to make part of the record that are all under a hundred feet of frontage, anywhere from thirty-three, seventy-three to a hundred feet. And I have.
Were those, were those grants?
Not all of them, no. Some, some are pre-existing, some.
Can you tell us how many?
I, I wouldn't be able to give you that information, but what I, what I have done for you is I've also given you a list. Not every single variance that's ever been granted, but there is a precedent with the board with respect to properties that are similar in size and setbacks to the property in question. If you look at my, my submission, I've given you a list. I entitled the prior variance approvals by the town and the Oakany Association. There's many more than five, but I gave you five examples. One at fifty-two Lawrence, I, I not only gave you the, the address, the information, I gave you the actual decision, so you can look at them. Fifty-two Lawrence Lane, side yard of fourteen point four feet, lot size of twenty thousand square feet. That was back in nineteen ninety-nine. Forty-five West Lane, eighty-five foot street frontage. We have more than that. Lot size twenty thousand five twenty, side yard fourteen feet. That was two thousand thirty-six West Lane.
Yeah, we have it in front of us. It's part of the submission. Here's my question I have for you, Mr. Juista. Do you have any precedent that we've granted at nineteen thousand seven forty-seven with both side yard setbacks of fourteen instead of twenty-five? I'm looking through them. I, I just got this now, and it, it looks as though yours has the greatest relief sought. I don't see any that are under twenty thousand square feet, and those that have side yard setbacks are larger. So this would be, would require the greatest, greatest variance of any of the five that you've given us. Is that correct?
I disagree with that with respect to.
Then fine. Tell me one, point me to one of the five that has less than twenty thousand square feet. Just tell me.
Okay.
Is it one, two, three, four, or five? Just give me a number.
We believe that a variance was granted for twenty-six West Lane, Bay Shore, New York.
Well, wait a while, wait a while, wait a while. I'm, we're looking at the sheet you gave us. Let's just start off with what's in front of us.
Right.
Because that we can look at. Don't, it's hard for you, when applicants say, well, we think, we believe it could, that means nothing. What I'm asking you is, look at the sheet you provided. You just referenced it. Which of those is less than twenty thousand square feet?
None of those.
All right, so.
It's obvious. It's on, it's on the list. There's none of those.
All right, so then how many of one, two, three, four, or five have less than twenty thousand square feet and require a, uh, looks like a fifty percent, almost, maybe it's forty percent relaxation of both side yards? Which ones have both of those variance requests? One to five?
None of those. None of those.
Okay, so when I, when I said earlier, I looking at it, and I said, this would be the greatest variance sought, you said, no. I'm wondering, do you want to change that answer?
That's because, not on that list, because I could not find the variance application itself, is twenty-six West Lane, Bay Shore, New York, and that received a variance, and that is fourteen thousand eight hundred and ten square feet.
Do we have a copy of that? Did you provide that? I, I understand. Where is it? So we can look at it.
I'm, I do not, I told you that I was unable to obtain a copy of that, but I'm sure that, being the Board of Appeals, that you would have, have the means to obtain that. I'm just giving you the, I'm giving you the property address.
That, Mr. Juista, that's not our job. That's your job. It's your application.
Mr. Juista.
And you'd be surprised at how little we have access to.
Yes.
Mr. Juista, would you, would you like to have a, a brief adjournment and get some time to get some other information in here for a better, a stronger application for what Mr. Wexler is asking? Would that be helpful?
If, if you, if you think that's appropriate, I will be happy to, to take it adjourned.
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm not here to tell you, I'm not here to tell you if it's appropriate or not. I'm just saying that if you know of more properties in the area that could state, be a little stronger for your argument, I think that would help out being that Mr. Wexler is questioning some of the variance approvals that we have that you listed here on, on your submission.
And I would, of course, Mr. Chairman, join you in having no objection to such an application.
I just think it'd be strong, a stronger argument for yourself, knowing that you, you stated that you have some more. Mr. Wexler would like to see them. So.
I'll be, I'll be happy to do so.
So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn the application to a date convenient for the secretary and Mr. Juista. Juista, excuse me, sir.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next application number four twenty-six dash twenty, Ramon G. Mendez and Maria A. Visioso. Permission to leave two patios, having side yard of two feet and three feet instead of required four feet each, to establish accessory apartment pursuant to ISO town code section sixty-eight dash six oh two, having driveway width of twenty-four feet instead of permitted eighteen feet, side yard of three feet instead of required four feet. Every front yard occupancy of forty-three point five percent instead of permitted thirty-five percent. Residence B district, south side of Grouse Drive, two hundred ninety, number thirty-four, two hundred ninety-five feet east of Liba Court, Brentwood. Is anyone here for the applicant?
Yes.
Hi.
Good evening.
Yes, hi. Good evening.
Name and address of the record, please.
Ramon G. Mendez and Maria Visioso.
Your address, man?
Thirty-four Grouse Drive, New York.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sorry, my English is not that good.
You're doing great. Better than my Spanish.
Oh.
The, the, um, I just see a note on my, my list that, um, possibly married as a, uh, an expediter, maybe, or does I'm professional coming now or not?
No, that design professional never attends with their clients.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
How nice of them.
Yes.
So where, uh, you're here seeking permission to leave two patios having side of two feet and three feet, it's a required four feet. Seems de minimis. We see them a lot. Accessory apartment, you know, how, how big is your accessory apartment?
Yeah.
Uh, if, if you don't know the answer, ma'am, I'm sorry. It's, it's on, it's on the app.
I got you. It's seven hundred ninety six square feet. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, um, your driveway's, uh, width is a little bit too wide. Do you understand that? The, the width of your driveway by the road, it has to come in a little bit?
John, twenty four is, I'm sorry to keep interrupting. John, twenty four is the number that we typically do vary.
We always change. I'm sorry about that, Mary.
Yeah, yeah, that, that provision in the code is very confusing. You can't be less than eighteen and you can't be more than eighteen.
And you have a front yard occupancy of forty three point five instead of permitted thirty five. We normally go up to forty percent on front yard occupancy as a board. So you have three point five percent. You'd have to cut down, uh, pavers in your front yard.
I have to cut down.
Now, you, you have to reduce the number of pavers, the chairman is saying, not, you have to cut.
Just by three point five percent.
And, and if I could just interject there, just to possibly clarify, the board should probably do what you normally do, obviously, and, and grant no higher than forty percent for the driveway, but note that the typical allowance for twelve percent for walkway should be applied. Just so, just in case it hasn't been.
Okay, yeah, since we don't know, right?
Yeah, well, I see a lot of walkway in that front yard.
Yeah, no, I'm, what I'm saying is we don't know if the walkway went into the calculation or not, or was properly calculated, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank, thank you, ma'am.
Does anyone, anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Nicole, yeah, I'll take a motion.
Oh, what, what are we doing on this? Uh, you were breaking up.
Okay, I'll make the motion if you want.
Please do, yeah, I, I'm.
That's fine. No worries. So, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we deny that portion of the application which seeks a front yard occupancy of forty three point five percent instead of permitted thirty five percent. And instead grant a front yard occupancy of forty percent instead of thirty five percent. And then grant the balance of the application with a direction to the building division to review and make sure that the walkways have been adequately, um, uh, treated within the calculation.
I'll second that.
Accessory apartment too?
Oh, and grant the accessory apartment for a period of three years. Thank you.
I'll second that too.
Thank you, Mr. Wexler. Aye.
Aye. Application granted, ma'am, with, um, some provisions.
Ma'am, I think.
It's granted? Oh, oh, thank you. Can I ask you one question?
Sure.
Okay. In front of my driveway, you say you guys want me to do two feet up to the street.
No.
No?
We're not telling you that.
Oh, maybe, uh, maybe that's under DPW review?
Yeah, that, that, that's not us, ma'am.
Oh, no? Okay.
It might be a different department, but it's not us.
Oh, okay.
All right. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Oh, thank you. You too.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I believe there's, uh, one other item that Ms. Becero wants us to consider.
Yes, just one moment. We have to remove. She's still with us?
No.
Okay, so we have four accessory apartments to renew. They are. I'm sorry, it's five accessory apartments, number four twenty seven twenty through number four thirty one twenty.
I make a motion to approve for a period of three years. Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else, Ms. Becero?
Yes, there is one more case. There's one case that has been on our reserve list.
Turned into six real quick.
Sorry. Uh, this was an application that we heard in February. They were seeking an F A R of thirty one point seven nine percent to leave a one story addition, but also to leave an awning, like, sort of like a carport on the side of the house. We suggested at the hearing in February that they remove the awning and that would get them under the thirty percent and save the addition to the dwelling. That was probably the more important part of their application. Uh, they asked to meet with planning or, and we, we rescheduled it to March twenty four, the ill-fated hearing which was canceled. We then heard the applicant on our very first Zoom hearing on May five. You might remember that a parrot walked across her table and jumped up on her shoulder. And she was the sister of the applicant and she expressed that she really didn't want to have to take down that carport. It was substantial. And we reserved decision and, um, I think that the applicant has chosen wisely to tear down the carport. Deirdre Ryan from planning actually made an inspection for me because it's not far from here and verified as did the applicant with photos that the carport is down. So I don't know what the resultant F A R is exactly, but I'm certain it brings it slightly under thirty percent. They also had a, a fence, small picket fence in the sight distance triangle that's been removed and verified with photos. And they also had a shed that needed to be relocated to a property line, and that's been relocated to, uh, a two foot setback. So it now complies.
So then you're, you, you're saying that we should grant the application at thirty percent F A R and the others portions for the carport and the fence are deemed withdrawn and grant then the balance of the application.
Right. The carport was actually not in, the carport met setback, so it wasn't in the call of the meeting. So.
So just grant the thirty percent F A R is what you're suggesting.
Right, right. And you, the fence, the way the call of the meeting read with the fence was whether it was in the corner and driveway sight distance triangles. It's entirely been removed now. I saw it in the photographs. And the shed, I would say, was moved to the property line. She didn't make it clear whether she moved it to the required two foot setback or not. I don't think you would have had an objection to it being.
We can grant the shed relief and, and then if it's, that way, if it's greater than that.
Can everybody see there? It's a small shed. It was just slightly encroaching on the adjacent property. And they've relocated it. I'm just not certain whether it's to the property line or the two foot setback. If you want to just require the two foot setback, I, that's fine also.
I don't care about the property line if no one else does.
I'm good. I'm good.
Good too.
Okay, so, uh, I'll read it. Is that okay? And we'll take a vote?
Sure. Now, now you're reading what? I wasn't good enough?
Well, go ahead. You read to Natasha. Good luck.
I, I, what am I going to read?
I know, no cheat sheet. Sorry, fellas. Okay. Application number one sixty six dash twenty, Harun Durani. In accordance with the proposed written decision dated July twenty first, twenty twenty, the application is denied as submitted as to floor area ratio of thirty one point seven nine percent. Granted a floor area ratio not to exceed thirty percent. And it is denied as to the fence. Granted permission to relocate the shed to the property line, not having a setback of two feet. On motion of?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Got, will something to write?
If there be, is no other business, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. See you next week.